I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation unto God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's have a moment of silence or prayer for all of the violence in the world, the wars, and for a more peaceful future for all of us.
All right, before I go through the action items, do we have some public service announcements?
Yes, a resident on Cedar Street wanted to express his thanks to Heather and her DPW crew headed by Brian Kerboy for the wonderful job they did on Cedar Street.
Oh, thank you. Pass that along. Appreciate it.
I was hoping she could be here for the meeting, but then I saw the agenda and said, no, she won't. But yeah, if you would just tell her, he was very grateful.
Will do. Thank you.
Well, Mary, is that it?
That's it.
Okay, well, that triggered a memory for me. I also should thank the DPW. The road that leads to the Public Water Tower by Sanian's Church is very passable now. It's in good shape, and a hazard has been taken away, so that was good work as well.
Okay, I have nothing from tonight.
Okay, the action items for this evening are: Consideration of possible action on the appointment of Richard Volpe to the Sturbridge Memorial and Monuments Committee for a term to expire September 3, 2027; Consideration of possible action on the appointment of Walter Hershey to the Sturbridge Memorials and Monuments Committee for a term to expire September 3, 2027; Consideration of possible action on the appointment of Hollis Turnbo to the Sturbridge Cultural Council for a term to expire June 30, 2027; Consideration of possible action on the appointment of Gail Watson to the Sturbridge Cultural Council for a term to expire September 9, 2026; Consideration of possible action on the appointment of Daniel Wilson to the Sturbridge Cultural Council for a term to expire September 3, 2027; Consideration of possible action on the appointment of Crystal Burnett to the Sturbridge Memorials and Monuments Committee for a term to expire in September 19, 2027; Consideration of possible action and appointment of Debbie Shero to the Sturbridge Memorials and Monuments Committee for a term to expire September 3, 2026; Consideration of possible action to authorize the Trails Committee to add additional associate member position to the committee; Consideration of possible action on the appointment of Kathy Peterson to the Sturbridge Trails Committee as an associate member; Consideration of possible action on an application for a one-day liquor license for Deep Roots Distillery USA for an art gallery opening located at 559 Main Street on the third floor in Fiskdale on September 9, 2024 from the hours of 4:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m.; Consideration of possible action on an application for a one-day liquor license for Deep Roots Distillery for the Harvest Fest located on the Sturbridge Town Common on October 19, 2024 from 10:00 to 5:00, and October 20, 2024 from 11:00 to 4:00; Consideration of possible action on the reappointment of Tom Chamberlain to the Sturbridge Trails Committee for a term to expire June 29, 2027; Consideration of possible action on the reappointment of Jennifer Scherer to the Sturbridge Trails Committee for a term to expire June 17, 2027; Consideration of possible action on the reappointment of Fritz Reeve to the Sturbridge Trails Committee for a term to expire May 31, 2027; Consideration of possible action on the reappointment of Dave Vedenes to the Sturbridge Trails Committee for a term to expire June 29, 2027; Consideration of possible action on the reappointment of Margaret Darling to the Sturbridge Council on Aging for a term to expire June 17, 2027; Consideration of possible action on the reappointment of Kenneth White to the Sturbridge Council on Aging for a term to expire June 17, 2027; Consideration and possible action to authorize the chair to execute the contract with Fratelli Oil for heating fuels for fiscal year 2025; Consideration and possible action to accept the letter of resignation from Annie Rossioli, recreational director, effective September 25, 2024; Consideration and possible action to accept the letter of resignation from Tom Lefebvre, senior heavy equipment operator from the DPW, effective August 9, 2024; Consideration of possible action for the selection of the fiscal year 2025 Central Mass Regional Planning Commission delegate and alternate appointment; Consideration of possible action to authorize the town administrator to enter in a contract for the purchase of electricity. And before I go on in the agenda, my apologies for any of those people that I mispronounced their names who are watching. Cable Advisory Committee update, the town administrators update, which will involve her biweekly memo, old business, new business correspondence, approval of minutes, citizens' forum, and then we will adjourn.
I know, not fun.
That was something. All right, so, Robin, do you want to start with?
Sure.
Do we want to group any of these together? We want to do them separately?
I think we should group them together.
Here it is. Yes, at least the ones that all belong to the same.
Yeah, we could, you know, like, the first two are for one committee. So A, B, and F and G are all for the Memorials and Monuments Committee?
Yep.
Love it.
So if you want to group those?
I have a date.
There's two more people that it would be nice if we met them before we appoint them.
Right, and so, yeah, some of these are, because this is a new committee, we do have new people, some, the reappointments, I think we certainly can group together.
Right.
All right, yeah, we should have, that's true. All right, well, turning it back over to our chair.
Okay.
I just, I just lost my breath reading all the action items.
Oh, I got out of that.
We got out of that, yes, and we're just about to start the appointments and reappointments.
So Michelle has it set up that all the new appointments are at the top of the agenda, the reappointments are all further, so if we want to group the reappointments by committee, we could do that very easily.
Okay. So, well, first of all, I was just at a lovely event for Lafayette and town, and the village did a heck of a job.
Yeah.
Just breathtaking out there, so, and then I had to come inside and do this, and I'm still sort of confused about what you're all saying. So you're...
We're on item A.
You say you're on A, but you're trying to say that you're going to...
We could do A and B.
All right, so, Consideration of possible action on the appointment of Richard Volpe to the Sturbridge Memorials and Monuments Committee for a term to expire September 3, 2027. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Guys have it. All right, Consideration of possible action on the appointment of Walter Hershey to the Sturbridge Memorials and Monuments Committee for a term to expire September 3, 2027. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? And so I assume where the next point that we were discussing was, these, some of these other folks are a little less familiar to us?
Right, yes.
Okay, so, and is the request from the board that we hold on those until we have them in, or do we want to...
No, it was just that they were going to consolidate everybody.
Oh, I see, because it's all the same point. All right, so, do we have a consolidated motion?
No, no, they were going to consolidate the people they already knew, and the people they didn't know, we were going to do individually.
Yeah, there's two more people for the memorials.
Okay.
Cultural Council.
All right, so, so what items are we going to...
Business as usual now on C.
Okay.
I assume...
Is Mr. Turnbo here? Yes, so...
Mr. Turnbo, come on down, come on down.
Hollis, you can come up.
So, Mr. Turnbo has applied for the cultural council?
Do we have...
We don't have any microphones.
Let's get him a microphone. In the way, please sit down, make yourself comfortable, Mr. Turnbo. Mr. Turnbo comes to us highly recommended from our Council on Aging Director. He has a background of many years in culture and arts, and has expressed an interest to join our cultural council, and so we are very pleased to put Mr. Turnbo in front of you for this evening.
Great, so, well, first of all, thank you for being willing to get involved. Can you tell us a little bit about why you want to be on the Sturbridge Cultural Council?
I'm sorry, I was impressed with getting a microphone.
Well, no, I just asked, can you let us know why you're interested in being on the Sturbridge Cultural Council?
Why?
Yeah.
Well, I saw there was a vacancy, there was a need. I do have a background in a former life, before moving here, and all the things that appeared to be involved with. Community theater, I have been music director, organist of churches, and I save the community. I have worked back many years ago with a major church denomination when clowning was very popular, and trained clownings. We clowned at the World's Fair and the Rose Parade, so it's a background of interest that I felt that was certainly compatible with the aims of this committee.
Does that make sense to me? Any questions from the board?
No, sounds very good. You have a very interesting background when I was reading.
And other art things, you know, as people know, I'm a quilter. I quilting, I'm one of the men quilting that started back in the '70s before the centennial, and so I have that kind of an art at work as well, so it...
Makes sense to me, do we have a motion?
Okay, I'll make a motion to appoint Hollis Turnbo to the Sturbridge Cultural Council for a term to expire June 30, 2027.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Thank you for volunteering.
I get to take the microphone with me?
They don't get to keep the mic, though a few would like to take some away from us.
The town board is not here to vote for elections, so you'll have to come back tomorrow.
Thank you, and I'm anxious to serve and see what we can do.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you so much. All right, Gail Watson.
So Ms. Watson also emailed me expressing interest in the cultural council, and she is here to tell us a little bit about herself as well. And she's been very active, I believe, in Chicopee.
Yes, well, we just moved, we moved to Sturbridge 11 years ago. Raised in, born and raised in Chicopee. I was involved with the school committee, also scouting, PTA, goodness, it's been so long, and many other things. I wrote my note, I probably should have...
Band, the band, you had a band?
Oh, yes, yes, my daughters were in the high school band, and I was the president of the, of the Band Parents Association and PTA Association, scouting, like I said, many, many things with my children who were growing up.
That sounds like funny.
That's the way, yeah, I always kind of stepped in when there was a need.
Well, that's, well, we appreciate you being willing to do that now. Do we have any questions for Ms. Watson?
Very community oriented, and you continue to be, which is great.
Really, really, I'm not sure that my children really appreciated it because...
No, they don't.
You get away from your mother.
No.
Oh, here's my mother again.
We're certainly glad to have stolen you from Chicopee. So with that, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion for the appointment of Gail Watson to the Sturbridge Cultural Council for a term to expire September 19, 2026.
Second.
Thank you, and all those in favor? Guys have it, thank you so much.
Thank you, ma'am.
Welcome aboard. Our clerk will be in touch to swear you in when it's not an election day.
Normally I would be here now, but...
Okay, so then we are on to...
Am I excused?
You are.
Thank you.
We're not quite so formal, is that? All right, so then we are moving to Danielle Wilson. Would you come down?
So Ms. Wilson is a 20-year resident who expressed interest in this particular committee as well.
All right, why did you express interest in this particular committee?
Well, I've lived here for almost 20 years, like you said, and I've had two kids who have gone through all of the schools here, and I was quite involved when they were younger, and I find myself with some more free time now that they are older. I've got a junior in high school and a sophomore in college, and I saw a post on Facebook saying that they were in need of some people for the committee, and I thought, well, I've got time, and I work from home, so can be kind of isolating, so I thought it would be a good opportunity to get involved.
Great, then it's very sensible. We're glad you did.
Yeah, so, any questions from the board? Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to appoint Danielle Wilson to the Sturbridge Cultural Council for a term to expire September 3, 2027.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, all those in favor? Guys have it, welcome aboard.
Thanks.
All right, next up, Crystal Burnett for the Sturbridge Memorials and Monuments Committee for a term to expire September 19, 2027.
So Ms. Burnett had originally applied, I believe, for cultural council, and I messaged her back, and I said, I have a lot of people for cultural council, I'm trying to staff our memorials and monuments committee as well, and in her initial email, she'd indicated that she just wanted to get involved, get behind the scenes a little bit, and she said she would absolutely be willing to step in, we gave her a little background on this new committee, and she said she'd be willing to join us for that.
Oh, great.
Yeah.
Is there any question?
Yeah, no, I'm excited, like Robin said, I applied for the Cultural Council Committee. I own a business in Brookfield, I grew up in North Brookfield, been a resident here for, I think I told Robin, five years, I look back, it's been a, almost...
Time does that.
Yeah, I'd love to get involved, and actually, it lines up well because I'm part of a family, we do a yearly annual gathering, and we've been gathering since the 1800s, so my family and I, we do a lot of genealogy, so I have access to, a lot of my family know how to get historical data, so I think that'll be a good asset to bring in.
So you got a guy to get some information?
And I am good with all electronics, pretty much everything, so help with like computers, social media, all of that.
Great, so...
Especially with the new committee, that'd be nice.
Yeah, for sure. Any questions for Ms. Burnett? Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we appoint Crystal Burnett to the Sturbridge Memorials and Monuments Committee for a term to expire on September 19, 2027.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Guys have it, welcome aboard.
Thank you very much.
All right, and then we are moving on to consideration and possible action on the appointment of Debbie Shero to the Sturbridge Memorials and Monuments Committee for a term to expire September 3, 2026. Come on down.
It's so nice to see people face to face, I meet everybody by email, so... So Deb also had expressed interest and was willing to step in and work with us on this new committee after she took a look at the mission statement?
Yes, so, I also originally applied to the cultural commission, but Robin suggested after looking at my resume, she thought I would be better suited, actually, for the monuments committee. Just a little personal background, I'm from New York, I moved up to Sturbridge about three years ago, love the town, I've never been here, I know everyone in Massachusetts has come to Old Sturbridge, we went to Philadelphia, so I've never been to...
Way up here.
So, I got involved in, my background is in finance and investment banking, but I had the opportunity to volunteer at the Optical Heritage Museum in Southridge, fell in love with it, and quickly became director of the museum. So, you know, in terms of artifacts and preservation, that's all we do. On a personal note, I love antiquing, I love restoring things that are hundreds of years old, I don't know, I think I was actually born in a prior life, in the Renaissance or the medieval period or something, but that's a personal passion, so restoration, preservation is in my blood now.
Oh, that's great.
It's perfectly...
What a good fit.
I don't have any questions, any questions from the board?
No.
All right, do we have a motion?
Okay, I'll make a motion to appoint Debbie Shero to the Sturbridge Memorials and Monuments Committee for a term to expire September 7.
September 3.
Sorry, September 3, 2026.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Welcome aboard. Thank you so much.
All right. Hey, now, that's four, right?
That's four, so we have one more position on that.
Yeah.
We're almost fully staffed. Yep, so that one's...
We have to have us out on the open space.
Yep, and Cultural Council is fully filled now, we have one more on the memorials, Open Space now has two vacancies that we have to publish for as well, but we're slowly but surely, we're actually...
Yeah, because I know there was a fifth.
There's a fifth.
But...
Yes, so we had the spot, but...
Yeah, didn't think it was right to have a...
Too heavy of a representation from one committee.
Well, it would have been the majority of that committee...
Of one committee, yeah, on another committee, yep, and that, so then the order that they came in, that was unfortunate.
Yeah, well...
All right, on to action item H, Consideration and possible action to authorize the Trails Committee to add additional associate member position on the committee.
So this, there is a memo in here, I believe, from Brandon, did it go in there? No, actually.
No, just an email.
Yeah, so Brandon Goodwin had reached out and Tom Chamberlain, and asked if we would consider putting an associate member, it's a position that's a volunteer oversight-type position, I believe, so we now have someone sort of running the volunteers, but they believe that that position should be an associate member as well, and so the request from the Trails Committee came for this, and I certainly support the addition of this associate position. They do so much, and it's such a large undertaking in that organization that our Trails Committee does, that to have more rather than less is critical, I think.
It's one of those committees, more hands on deck, the better, as opposed to other committees where you don't want it to get too...
Yeah, you know, sometimes if they're too sort of idea-based, it gets too big, but this is like a hands-on...
And they do a phenomenal job.
Despite my low opinion of Mr. Chamberlain and Goodwin, I think we support them.
I have to be careful which Goodwin I get emails from, and who I say yes to, and who I get in trouble with.
Oh, you don't get in any trouble?
No.
Listen, you don't remember who you get in trouble with?
I don't remember who I get in trouble with.
But anyhow...
Okay, so there's, it's a two-potter.
Correct, yes, so we have to create a position and then...
Yeah, I'll make a motion to authorize the Trails Committee to add an additional associate member position.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Great, guys have it.
So now we'd like to introduce Kathy Peterson, and I have to say, I met Ms. Peterson a while back, she popped in my office, actually, she and her husband popped in my office, and introduced themselves, and as soon as she said she was involved in like volunteering on the Iditarod, like the Iditarod, I said, okay, what do you want to volunteer for? Because like, clearly, if you can volunteer on that, you can do just about anything. And so here she is, and I, from what I gather, the buzz is that she does a wonderful job working with our volunteers.
Yes.
And we're looking to have her in a more leadership role in that position, and that does not surprise me based on the conversation that we had probably a year ago.
Yeah, it wasn't too long ago you were in...
Yeah, we started dodging our in-ears.
My husband and I moved here about three years ago, and we love it here. We are longtime residents of Alaska, and we were there 30-plus years. I did a lot of volunteering in my adult life, probably 15 years with the Iditarod sled dog race as a logistics coordinator. My husband and I have volunteered with Habitat Humanity and built a house in Amherst. Just so, I've always found something that I can volunteer for, and when we came here and talked with Robin, she gave us a bunch of ideas, and one of them was working on the trails, so last October, we started volunteering with them, and we're probably, should I say, Brian?
30 hours a week.
We're probably doing about 30 hours a week.
Don't let that stuff through.
We love doing the outside work, and so it was a perfect fit for us, and we love working with the Trail Committee, and I think they like working with us, so, and we're hoping to get more volunteers coming to the Trail Committee to, to help with us as far as maintenance and that on the trails, and until I came, they didn't really have a person just designated to work getting volunteers, so that's what I'm going to be working towards, and my husband and I together are kind of helping to take over some of Tom Chamberlain's duties, so he can start to retire, I think he's been retiring for like five years.
He's been there his whole life, honestly.
And I don't think anybody really wants him to retire, and I'm not sure he really wants to either, but we're, you know, we're doing a lot of work with him to, to help the trails.
All makes sense to me. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion on the appointment of Kathy Peterson to the Sturbridge Trails Committee as an associate member.
Second.
Great, all those in favor? Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
We really appreciate it.
Can I just make an observation?
Yeah.
I can't believe that, you know, the town of Sturbridge is able to attract so many people that came from, you know, we had a New York City investment finance person who loves it, you're from Alaska, you love it, so Sturbridge must be doing something right.
I've survived for a while.
You're lucky here.
We have a lot of versatility, obviously, as a community, so...
We do have three kids here, so...
Yeah, we have two juniors that teach, we have a seventh, a detective, but we still have four children in Alaska.
Oh, did you forget them?
But, you know, when we came here, they shared us all the sheds with the chainsaws, it was like we were at home in Alaska.
Great, thank you, guys.
Thank you so much.
I've done a lot of hiking this summer.
I think you're going to bring a lot to this community.
And our trails, by far, are, can't just, nobody can compare, the communities, I mean, they're fine, but from the bridges they constructed, they're always well groomed.
No, the work, and it takes a lot of work, and I think anybody just at home who might be listening or anybody in the crowd here, you cannot overstate the amount of hours that have been spent on those trails, it is an extraordinary amount of work, so we appreciate our Trails Committee and all of their hard work. So with that, I'm going to move to action item J, which is consideration of possible action on a one-day liquor license for Deep Roots Distillery USA for an art gallery opening located at 559 Main Street, third floor, Fiskdale, on September 9, 2024, from 4:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m.
Good evening.
Yeah. Long time no see.
So there is an art gallery opening up on the third floor, and she would like us to serve only wine for her event, we're looking for pouring permit for that, and then for the Harvest Fest, we're just looking to do what we've done the last two years, no change at all there.
Okay, so we're just talking about the 559 Main Street one, which is the one that's upstairs for now.
Yep.
Questions from the board?
No.
All right, do we have a motion?
Okay, I'll make a motion that we grant the one-day liquor license for Deep Roots Distillery USA for the art gallery opening located at 559 Main Street, third floor, Fiskdale, on September 9, 2024, from 4:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Guys have it. All right, now, on to the consideration and possible action on an application for a one-day liquor license for Deep Roots Distillery USA for the Harvest Fest located on the Sturbridge Town Common on October 19, 2024, from 10:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., and October 20, 2024, from 11:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m., and I think you already told us a little about it.
Yep, so for that one, no changes from what we've done the last two years.
Perfect, do we have any questions? All right, do we have a motion?
Okay, I'll make a motion that we grant the one-day liquor license for Deep Roots Distillery USA for the Harvest Fest located on the Sturbridge Town Common on October 19, 2024, from 10:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., and October 20, 2024, from 11:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Three, and one abstention. All right, we are all set.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming in. Thank you for coming in. Okay, action item L, consideration and possible action on the reappointment of Thomas Chamberlain to the Sturbridge Trails Committee for a term to expire June 29th, 2027. Do we have a motion?
I think this was the one that they wanted to group together because of the reappointments.
Okay.
L and O have, and Mr. Vadenes, Mr. Vadenes both have the same expiration date, so you can do L and O.
I'm gonna make a motion to reappoint Thomas Chamberlain and David Vandenes, which I butchered, to the Sturbridge Trails Committee for a term to expire June 29th, 2027. Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Any others you do individually?
Oh, none of the other ones have shared dates?
Not the same dates, no.
Okay, so then I would like action item M, consideration and possible action on the reappointment of Jennifer Scher to the Sturbridge Trails Committee for a term to expire on June 17th, 2027.
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Guys have it. Then I move to action item N, consideration and possible action on the reappointment of Fritz Reed to the Sturbridge Trails Committee for a term to expire May 31st, 2027.
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Great.
P and Q can consolidate.
All right, so P and Q, okay, so I'm going to make a motion to reappoint Margaret K. Darling and Kenneth White to the Sturbridge Council on Aging for a term to expire on June 17th, 2027. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second.
All those in favor? Great. All right, moving to R, consideration and possible action to authorize the chair to execute the contract with, how am I saying, Fracturely Oil for heating fuels for FY 2025. And I think.
So Robin gave you a memo on this. We worked with CMR PC. We only really had one vendor to choose from. The number's not horrible, so this is what we got.
Okay.
So I don't have much more to say than that. Wish I'd more said than told you about that, but.
Do we have a, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead. No. I didn't, did you say some move?
Oh, okay, you both said.
Second.
A second. All those in favor? I was like, wow, Mary Lou's picking a weird one to fight over, but.
I started to, but then my other part of my brain heard her voice.
All right, all right, I'm going to, consideration and possible action to accept a letter of resignation from Annie Rossioli, Recreation Director, effective September 25th, 2024. This was discussed briefly at our previous meeting. We all love Annie to pieces, I think, and we're very happy for her, or well, we're happy for her as well as us. And any other questions?
I spoke with her today and just expressed my, it was bittersweet that she's leaving, but I wished her the best, because she's done a phenomenal job with that department.
She has.
You know, I mean, I've been on that, I was on that committee for over twenty years, and seen a few come and go, but Annie did a really super job.
She's very positive, very young woman. About everything, you know, she pursued, and a lot of responsibility with the summer program. It's a lot of oversight, and I know all the students really love that summer program.
And she put a lot of time.
Summer programs, I mean, right.
No, she's a pip. So with that, unless there's anything further, I'm going to make a motion to accept the letter of resignation from Annie, effective September 25th, 2024, with regrets.
Second.
All those in favor? Guys have it. All right, moving to action item T, consideration and possible action to accept a letter of resignation from Thomas LeFevere. I'm having a tough time tonight. Senior Heavy Equipment Operator from the Department of Public Works, effective August 9th, 2024.
So Mr. LeFevere restarted with us, and then was offered a very good job with the feds. Can't compete with the feds.
Right.
No.
But we still have an exit interview.
Yes, and that was the reason on that one. In fact, he had been waiting to get on board. We got him on board, as an opening that was appropriate for him came up, and then he got the offer from the feds. I will say, I just want to ask the board, the appointments no longer for that department come in front of you? Like, we just hired someone today as a driver with the new charter. Since the appointments don't come from you, do you want, do you still want the resignations? I'm assuming you still want to see the resignations?
Yeah, I think so. It keeps us.
Yeah, so you're aware.
Idea of what's going on.
Okay, I just want to confirm, you still do want to see those?
I think so, yes.
Yep, and even just tell us when you appoint, I mean, we don't have to do the appointment, but until you're upstate, you can tell us.
Look, I just thought today, we just added that one out, but, okay, yep.
Okay, so I'm going to make a motion to accept his letter of resignation, effective August 9th, 2024, with thanks for his service.
Second.
All those in favor? Great. All right, consideration and possible action for the selection of FY 2025, Central Mass Regional Planning Commission delegate and alternative plan that. So I haven't been the best member of this particular role. It's usually, it's fallen on, for some reason, it seems to fall on bad timings for me. I do have an office basically across the street, so I'll continue to do it if you guys want me to.
Yeah, it doesn't entail.
Well, I mean, I get on the virtual things and then, but, you know, so I'm happy to do it, but I just want, you know, because everybody else really wants it.
If someone wants to be the alternate.
No, we're happy with the both of you.
And I do, I do keep up with what they're doing, and if there's something of interest to the team, I'll let you know.
It's important to let us know.
And they're very good at communicating, so it's, you, the information comes, and they, but it's, okay, I'll guess I'm keeping it, so. Mary, are you okay with being the alternative? Okay.
We're very happy with you two.
Yeah, whatever. I guess I'm gonna make an appointment, getting myself the representative to the Central Massachusetts Regional Planning Commission Delegate, and Mary Dowling has the alternate appointment.
Second.
All those in favor? All right, consideration and possible action, authorize the town administrator to enter into a contract for the purchase of electricity.
So I need two approvals from you tonight, or one approval and one decision from you.
Okay.
Tomorrow, I meet with Beth, our energy consultant, Tony, who monitors the numbers. They get pricing for me now. We need to, by November, have locked in. Prices are looking pretty good right now. I literally have to lock the day I say to them I have to sign. So I have to have approval from you to sort of let me do that, pre-authorize me to sign based on the recommendations of the consultants, because if I wait to bring it back to you all, what I will do is bring it back as a ratification of the action, so I would sign and agree, and then bring it back to you to officially ratify the number. So first, I need authorization. Secondly, what I need is, last time we contracted, we contracted 100% renewable green. We can contract 100% green, or we can contract at the state green requirement, which is still relatively green. The Commonwealth has pretty rigid standards. And it's a bit cheaper. The difference, depending on the numbers, will likely range, if we went with the state minimum, to about 10,000 to 25,000, depending on usage. We're gonna go up in usage, which means the difference will be greater, obviously, because we'll be using more at a higher or lower price. I mean, my thing is, given that the Commonwealth is very responsible on what it considers bare minimum, my natural instinct would be go to the cheaper price, but given that in the past, the board has gone 100% green, I didn't want to make that decision.
Personally, I would, unless there is a major deviation, if it's slightly more expensive to not burn coal, I would prefer to not burn coal, unless it's.
It's somewhere between 10 and 25,000 likely. Now, if the prices come in tomorrow and the difference is 50,000, then you might say that's worth the difference. If you want to give me like a difference, if it's up to 25,000, go 100% green. I mean, that was kind of why I threw that 10 to 25 number at you, because that's an affordable difference, if you will. Anything more than that, I think you, you do have to think about it, you know, if we're talking 50, $60,000 difference.
No, I hear you, but I still, my personal preference is it's kind of where things are going.
I would agree with our chair.
So regardless of, unless it's something.
I'd rather be forward-looking rather than.
Okay.
Yeah.
Regret. Regret. I mean, it's not like it's a million dollars when you look at the size of our budget and.
It's just if we, if structures like us don't do it, who the hell's doing it? That's sort of my logic, so. So that would be, but otherwise, I.
If something egregious comes out of it, that I say, wait a second, I can't, just can't automatically spend $200,000 that I don't have, okay, so we'll.
Yeah, and then, okay, so with that, I think you're, you're looking for two separate motions or one?
So if one is just the policy, two, if one is the policy that you would prefer to go 100% green, and obviously, I'll take the caveat if something is bizarre on that number, I'll come back to you. And then second, to authorize me to enter into that agreement tomorrow if the numbers look right. And literally, they're watching these markets day to day. They might say to me, wait two days, wait three days. That's why I need the pre-authorization.
You know, when we're applying for other kind of grants or everything, and being a green community, does that also help us when we can?
Well, the green community's money has come back well, and that's probably part of what the thought process was when we first locked into this is 100% green. Nothing I've hit right now gives us sort of preferential outside of that, but I can't say what the future's gonna be, because we don't know what that direction, you know, to the chair's point, that's the direction, if we say that's the direction things are going, then we may down the road seek grants that are preferential, or the Mass Works grants, preferential to a more green community.
Yeah, I mean, the spending, and I don't mean this as a partisan comment, I think I'm being fairly objective. The, there's a lot going on with the federal government in terms of the climate bill, what the next administrations will do or not. This being more green, if we are seeking monies, presumably would be helped the more conservative path in either event relative to a de minimis spend on the budget. But as a non-de minimis spend, I suspect, then it's a different conversation. But as we go forward and we're looking for more infrastructure investment, given what the nature of that funding at the federal level was, which is pretty enormous, and there's that infrastructure bill, I think it'd probably be the appropriate course.
Because we have, for individual projects, receive credit on like the H Act and things like that for state credits and whatnot.
Yeah, and it's where the.
For being all green.
And it's where the.
Not for being all green, but generally as part of green community.
So what I'm saying is that that does, yeah, kind of offset even that de minimis increase, the prospect of possible.
Potential, yeah. We want to be able to hold ourselves out as beacon hill that way, too. So with that, I will make a motion to maintain the previous policy, using 100% green within reason. Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? All right, guys have it. And then we are going to authorize, so we authorize Robin within whatever legal structures we have to enter into a contract, to lock in a rate with the, for the electricity. Any concerns about that?
And we'll make a determination with their advice as to whether we should do the one, two, or three-year based on what the market looks like literally tomorrow.
Yeah, and this is why you hire consultants, and so, do we have a motion?
Make a motion to authorize the town administrator to enter in a contract for the purchase of electricity.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Great.
Thank you.
All right, and then we're onto your town administrator update.
Yeah, just very quickly, Rob, this was from the August 19th. We had the Woo Sox take over town. Sturbridge Girls Softball was the team takeover. Thank you to Annie for coordinating that, and thank you for the Woo Sox for continuing to be a great partner. We are, we are in the process right now of reviewing betterment language. We've had a couple of private roads come forward and address us about having homeowner associations and establishing betterments, and what we have discovered is we do not actually have a betterment bylaw in place. We have references to it in sewer betterments, but not road paving and drainage benefits. And we cannot, per law, do benefits for just paving. We can do benefits for drainage on, betterments for drainage on privates and the paving associated with drainage, but interestingly, not simply road paving benefit, betterments, if there's no paving, drainage association. Anyway, it's complicated, but I just want you to know that we will be bringing things to you on this, and if you hear buzz from different private roads about betterments, we are working on it with legal counsel and finding out what we can and cannot do. It appears that things have been done in the past, that there's no bylaw to reference as to why or how. Just history at the time.
We appreciate it. We look forward to that.
Waterline damages is an older one, too. There was a private contractor damaged a line on August 12th. A few units were over the outwater. DPW and VIO were notified. We then notified the health agent. Jamie, I think I let you know, or no, I let the chair of the Board of Health know, and we assisted in the repair, and everybody was fine by that night. Soliciting, this is, we've been having a lot of complaints, and the public has asked me about soliciting. People go into your door, even if they're not actually selling, but saying you would be a good candidate for, or we would like to buy solar from you if we can just put the panels on your roof. That is considered soliciting. So if people have a no soliciting sign and the person says, well, we're not really soliciting, according to our attorneys, they are. Therefore, if someone comes to your door and does that, and you have a no soliciting sign up, you call the police.
Well, I think it's literally the most naked version of soliciting, though.
We are also helping, you know, what people's rights are to have people on their property or not, and the whole permitting process, we permit people to do that, and so there's a lot of discussion on that. But I just want the public to know, we are working on it. We're looking at seeing if we can compile, people can register their houses no soliciting, so that when someone gets a soliciting license, a peddler's license or a soliciting license, we can hand them a list and say, here are the houses you are not to go to. So we're looking into sort of the legalities of that, too. Recreation, I am working with Kadian. He wants me to coordinate a review team. That's Leslie, Heather, myself. Annie will look at the resumes as well and glance and see if she sees anything of concern or sort of bonus to them. But basically, Kadian pretty much has said that if he has time, he'll join us at the meetings, but pretty much wants Leslie, Heather, and I to collectively sort of put forward a candidate or two for the Recreation Committee to review. And we have gotten several very qualified applicants, rec directors in other communities, rec managers in other communities, so I'm very relieved, because I'm a little nervous. 71 Mashpug Road, the conservation agent and I, along with an engineering representative for the property owner and both sides' attorneys. We did a site visit on August 28th. That attorney, the engineering person talked to Lauren. He compiled a memo based on the discussion with Lauren of what he believes the town needs for us to try to continue to resolve some of the issues there. Lauren will be reviewing that memo along with me. That was sort of one of the reasons I went, so I could sort of hear the discussion, and we will go from there. Obviously, there were some legal nuances to all this, and that's where we are with that.
Great.
DOT Route 20 planner Jean Buban and I have been informed by DOT. The district has said that the Noble Station may not meet the warrant anymore for the light. They are looking at doing work on Hall Road. We are, I just want everybody to know, we are in discussion. Nothing is finalized. There may be rumor mills out there, but we are in discussion, and we are talking about, and the chair and I spoke about this, having someone from DOT come in and just give us an update on where we are at. One of the projects got pulled off the tip because they, DOT could not get an engineer to bid on it, because of their new insurance requirements for engineer design bid stuff. They've raised their insurance requirements, DOT, they did not get a bidder, and now they're looking at reallocating tip money away. So we need DOT, we will bring DOT in front of the board. I think it's important. We have one of our reps from DOT here in the next several weeks.
Yeah, I would like a question and answer, too, about why were you even doing left turns onto that part of Route 20? Because it seems just.
Oh, yeah, well, I mean, left turns.
From Hall Road, the Hall Road across, I guess it's, yeah, and from the, I would assume, and I'm sure other people know better than I, that the left turns onto Route 20 is one of the main, or both from the Comfort Inn and from Hall Road. I don't think there'd be anywhere else on there. I mean, I think Fisk Hills only.
Fisk Hills, right.
Yeah, and so like, so I'd like, that, every time I've seen an accident in Sturbridge or Route 20, it's always at those two intersections, and that would be the only, one of the few, not few, but one of the places that would seem most likely to have enough speed involved to actually kill someone.
Mm-hmm, and now they have the turnaround up further off, and the whole point of that turnaround was just for this, so trucks and everybody else could do it.
Why is anybody allowed to do that? That seems, and it's an easy.
Because the state's always allowed it.
I know that.
That's why.
I get it, but that's, that's not a good enough answer.
Because we don't like it, plus when we get the report from the police chief, he always lists the number of accidents in that particular corridor.
But that's.
And it's not the worst one.
Well, but the point, but with that stated, my point is, if we're gonna have the DOT rep here, and if there are other frauds that are there, we should be, and never mind that, the end of, it doesn't, from what I can tell or pick up, the end of New Boston Road doesn't really seem to have been addressed. And we're gonna go into the next, we're gonna go into the winter with that entire infrastructure of that entire off-ramp vulnerable. So I just, you know, and I get that, it seems like right now they're doing all this construction in Charlton, and I'm not entirely sure what the outcome of that will be, but the, but then it's coming to Sturbridge, where they're gonna push it out through Grimfield, and we need to know what the hell is going on, and it doesn't. I'm not suggesting anybody. we need to know what the hell is going on, and it doesn't, I'm not suggesting anybody, Robin, or the police, or anybody in towns, or us, is doing anything wrong, but it is get to a point where it's like, what the hell is going on here?
Well, and we were floored at all of a sudden, the whole change in plans on this whole car, as of yesterday, like last week. Like, one day we have, these are the plans, these have been the plans for the last five years, by the way, we changed our mind.
And I get some of it is, like, when you actually get to the rubbery in the road, things do change.
But there's a lot of it.
Yeah, well, it's just, it's the, it's not the, I don't think that they're being deliberately non-transparent, but it doesn't matter if you're just not being transparent.
Heather and I were discussing that today, even about when they do roadwork, the maintenance crew doesn't seem to talk to their construction people who doesn't, you know, and then we don't have a point, they're not talking to each other, so we're only talking about, do we need a single point of contact? Because I have points of contact that I work with through Gene on long-range projects, I have points of contact that I work with through Heather on maintenance projects and construction projects, but we don't have one central person where they're all talking. So we're getting all different, it's very, very, it's absolutely maddening. So I do think it's important to bring them in and let them at least try to answer some questions.
Yeah, pushing in a position in a public forum is always helpful, because then at least we can point to what they said last time.
Yeah.
All right. Yeah, Charlie, come on up.
I know Rob is aware of this. Charlie, I'm the chairman of the planning board. You know, I really think if the board is that concerned, and Jamie, you're that concerned about what's going on with Route 20 there.
Yep.
You really need to have Gene come in and explain what she's been going through for the last several years.
Sure.
I mean, on that EV center and the group that just opened up there, you know, it took years, I mean, they, they had to redo that design at least three times.
Sure.
You know, we looked at like a roundabout they want in the future, they wanted a double roundabout, and all that time, it was all time and money spent, mostly by, you know, the developer.
Over a million, I think, on his part.
And Gene has gotten grants that have been spent on this thing over $100,000.
$250,000 in Mass Works grants.
Exactly. I really think it'd be good to have her, you know, come in some night and give an overview of this, because, you know, the planning board is really frustrated by this, because so much work has been done, so much proactive work from the town has been trying to get things right, and the state is, continues to change their mind on this stuff, so it is a serious problem.
Yeah, and it's not that, and you're right, Charlie, because it's not just that, it's like the changing minds, evolving, infrastructure's difficult, like, and things change, costs change, we get it, but it's the continued opaqueness while they're spending tremendous amounts of our money and then not taking care of, you know, when you drive by a Route 20 and you're like, I don't understand why no one's trimmed this, like, when is this getting trimmed? And it's just those type of things, again, but.
It's hard to calculate the taxpayer dollars of our hours.
Yeah.
That we've put in, long before I got here and then since I've gotten here.
I mean, even before this, I mean, years ago, when I was on the board, even before 2005, you know, the town appropriated our own money to do our own study on that, and we brought the state in, we hired a consultant who had, you know, done a lot of work, you know, with the state, very well respected by the Mass DOT. We had meetings with the state, and everything that we presented was sort of saying, it's going to be 10 years in the future, it's going to be in the future. So, I mean, it is something that is, is really become very frustrating.
Yeah, no.
And we're at the point where we really, really can't in good conscience be asking people to do a study of traffic there, because it doesn't really mean anything. They change it and they decide to do something differently, so.
I feel.
I think it's something the board ought to, you know, pay attention to and get involved in, because it's not really a good situation.
I think she's brought it up, I don't, I can't remember when, but it was probably in the spring, and this very point where now that it does seem to be, whatever is occurring, is, you need to be piercing through 20 to, between Charlton to Brimfield effectively, it's, there's, there's only, being a pain in the ass is sometimes the only way you can get them to pay attention, and that's not to you, Robin, it's.
No, and we, no, and even to get to the point of them agreeing to put the light at Noble originally, we marched up to the district headquarters en masse.
Yeah, still one of the books to be done, but again, it's going to be kind of a temporary type thing until something.
Yeah, even that, right, right.
And it's not one person, and my criticism is not about one person, one thing, one thing, it is the, and it's not, certainly not the town, it's just the business as usual nature of it drives me crazy. So no, it's well stated, and thank you to Gene and Robin for being very diligent.
Well, Gene, certainly the DOT's here, Gene will be present.
I'm curious, it's like, oh, we're going to the night meeting. Thanks, Charlie. All right, so.
Thanks, Charlie.
I think that was, people are too old business, I guess. Mary Blanchard, new business.
Did we ever settle that dispute on Lake Road?
Oh, the gates? Yeah, so we've been working with them, they have already started putting an order in for gate, one, you know, up to one direction, they, people still can have public access, you just can't cut through. Right now, there is an internal, or they're, they're working through a dispute between the two neighboring homeowners associations. I have sat with them in whatever capacity I can from the town position. Right now, really, the legal issue is a little more between the two homeowners associations. But we, within our role, have worked with them, the people on Lake Street are pleased with the work that we have done to this point for them, and the people on Old Town understand that the dispute isn't us, it's, we are within compliance. We did not authorize a gate, we simply indicated that if a gate went in in this particular way, we could still continue to plow and pothole fill the road.
Yeah, because somebody mentioned, sign keeps going up.
Yeah, and we will keep doing signage and whatnot, yeah, we can keep doing signage.
Well, private, private road, and it's really not a private.
It is, no, it's still a private road. It's just a private road, but the public can drive on it, but they do still, they do have a right to put up private roadway. What they do not have a right to do is block it where the public cannot drive on it.
It doesn't make sense.
So it's a private road being.
With public access.
But, it's crazy.
That's the, that's the law, though. We, they own the road, their deeds literally own the road. They own the road.
Can we just get us?
Yeah, I'll get you, I'll get you pages, it's pages of opinion on this.
This seems like a big contradiction.
It's not. It's, we cannot block it, we cannot say, no traffic allowed on the road, we cannot stop people from driving down it.
Well, probably.
But people do.
They can't stop them from driving it, they can drive up to the gate, what we have stopped is them driving through. What they have stopped is people driving through, which we can, which they can do, they can dead-end the road from either side.
Well, okay, so I, I mean, I guess on some level, if it's a stash story thing, it's a stash story thing, and it's a very confusing stash story thing, but if it is what it is, it's what it is, but just, can you please just circulate to us wherever the.
I'll get as much of the documentation, it's a lot of documentation, because I've had a lot of emails going back.
Oh, I guess it's not that much documentation.
Oh, well, you'd be surprised.
I think you'd be surprised what the board's definition of a lot of documentation is.
Also, did we ever settle the person taking up living in the parking lot?
That's been resolved, yes.
It's been resolved, there's no more living there.
I don't believe so, I believe that was removed.
Tell Chase, get out of there, and he got out of there.
Thank you on that, that's all I have.
Great. All right, Mary Dowling, old business.
Well, back to the state. I noticed that they, they've begun the reconstruction of the sidewalk on Route 20. What is their plan? Is that going, because some days they work on it, and some days they don't, and people are still using it as a sidewalk, and if somebody trips and falls, it's.
We're trying to get a handle on.
Are they going to, yeah. Do they tell you by the winter? Is it going to?
No, and, you know, Heather was frustrated today, because we get notification that they're going to do work on 84, like a mile away, where it barely matters to us, and then we find out they're doing work on 20 in the middle of the Brimfield Fair Week, and nobody tells us. So we're back to.
But do they think the sidewalk will be done by the winter?
I'm hoping so, yes. I will follow up and see what we can find out for sure. Nobody's really, nobody has told us much.
Because that's, you know, that's a big, that project has been going on for three, four years.
Yeah.
It is ridiculous.
Yeah.
And there's a lot of walkers on that road, so, okay. All right. I don't have any other old.
I don't have anything.
I have one old. I think we're supposed to start to get going on addressing our fiscal policies.
Yeah, so Barbara and I have worked on a draft.
Okay.
We are working on it, Barbara was out for a conference and then a week of vacation, but we have gone through, done an initial draft that should be ready to bring in front of you guys and FinCom in the next few weeks.
Can we have the old policy?
Yeah, you'll have a comparison, yes, you'll have a red line.
Good question, Mary.
Okay.
All right, that was my old business. New business, Mary Lou?
I have nothing.
Mary Dowling.
This is a little bit of old and new. On Route 15, where Pilot is, those tractor-trailer trucks are coming off 84 trying to get in, there's five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, and they're blocking the road, and so it's hazardous. So the other evening, I was leaving Lead Mine, coming down 15, and there were several tractor-trailer, so you had to.
In our right-of-way, in the road.
Yeah, so you had to wait until they're trying to get into Pilot.
Yeah.
And if you go around to the left, you can't see.
Okay, I'll talk to them.
And it's, it's, it's pretty bad.
Yeah, I'll talk to the chief.
I know, can.
Yeah, because they were monitoring it.
For a while.
Because there were regulations from the planning board on it.
I mean, there were, there were five, six deep.
Yeah.
Just obstructing the right lane from traveling.
So that's before where all the signs say do not park, or where the signs say do not park?
Well, they do park.
No, 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 I know, but I'm just trying to visualize.
I think, I think the do not, kind of across the street from where they say do not park, because I'm talking about them obstructing the right lane if you're trying to travel back to Sturbridge from Lead Mine.
Right.
It's a do not park across the street where they are parking, but if you're trying to get, you know, if you're trying to drive, the only way to do it is to go into the left